Donation of a heart, lung, liver, kidneys, and small intestines can save up to eight lives. And whereas deceased organ donors saved more than thirty-nine thousand lives last year. And whereas any person can register to be an organ eye tissue donor regardless of age or medical condition. And whereas over seventeen million Californians have signed up with the state authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wishes to organ eye and tissue donors are honored. And whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ eye tissue donor when applying for the renewing of the driver's license or ID cards at California Department Motor Vehicles. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifecalifornia.org or for Spanish speakers, www.donvidaCalifornia.org. And whereas California residents interested in saving your life through living kidney donation may visit Now therefore being resolved that the City Council of the City of Twenty-Nine Palms does hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five to be DMV Donate Life Month and encourages all residents to check yes online or when applying for renewing their driver's license ID at the DMV twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-five. We have no one correct? City of Twenty-Nine Palms proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas the tragedy of child abuse and neglect affects every community in California and touches the lives far too many citizens regardless of culture, ethnicity, religious and socioeconomic level. And whereas the threat of our children's welfare is demonstrated by steady increase in the number and the seriousness of reported cases of children abused and neglected. And whereas early identification and interventions are essential to successful to successful interrupting of the generational cycle of abuse and neglect. Collaboration among professionals concerned parents, volunteers, and policymakers can help reduce the level of child abuse and neglect in our communities. And whereas dedicated volunteers and professionals are working to decrease the indices of child abuse through prevention programs and coordination among agencies delivering services to child abuse victims and their families. And whereas the Observers of Child Abuse Prevention Month provides an excellent opportunity for all citizens to reflect on the tragic crime while redirecting themselves and taking an active role in the child abuse prevention activities in their communities. Now therefore being resolved that the City Council of City of Twenty-Nine Palms does hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in the City of Twenty-Nine Palms and encourages all residents to join with local community efforts to make sure that every child has the right to grow up in a stable, loving environment free of abuse and neglect. Dated this twenty-second day of May, April twenty twenty-five. I said May, yeah. City of Twenty-Nine Palms proclamation Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas in the United States, April Sexual Assault Awareness Month, SAM. And the goal of SAM is to raise public awareness about sexual violence and educate communities on how to prevent it. Calling attention to the fact that sexual harassment, assault, and abuse are widespread and impact every person in the community. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community and statistics show one in four women and one in twenty-five men will be sexually assaulted at some point in their lives. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in four girls and one in six boys will experience sexual assault before the age of eighteen. And whereas on campus, one in six women and one in sixteen men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. And whereas we recognize all those who work often as volunteers on behalf of rape survivors and their families. We acknowledge that many law enforcement officers, prosecutors, counselors, correction officers, physicians, and healthcare professionals whose dedication to serve helps sexual assault victims. And whereas this year SAM is celebrating the twenty-fifth anniversary with a campaign theme being Breaking the Silence and Believing Survivors. Whether they be workspace classrooms or social media platforms which are respectful and safe. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Twenty-Nine Palms does hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-five as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and recognizes that we, the citizens of Twenty-Nine Palms, have a stake in preventing sexual assault and will commit to the ending of the outrage of sexual assault by building a culture that will never tolerate sexual violence. Dated the twenty-second day of April twenty twenty-five. And she already up there.
Hi. Thank you so much.
Which he picked right here?
Yeah. You want me, I can talk first, yeah. Good evening and thank you so much. On behalf of Partners Against Violence, I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to the City of Twenty-Nine Palms, the mayor, and the City Council for this powerful proclamation, Recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This proclamation is more than just words for the victims that we serve. It's a commitment to supporting survivors and fostering a safer, more compassionate community. At Partners Against Violence, we are proud to provide a twenty-four-hour crisis hotline, advocacy and accompaniment during reporting and court processes, counseling services, and community education as well as prevention education and workshops as well. To the survivors in our city, we see you, we believe you, and we stand with you. Your strength inspires the work that we do every single day. Thank you again for recognizing this important issue and for being a partner in the effort to end sexual violence.
Thank you. All right, next, presentation to the Twenty-Nine Palms High School class of twenty twenty-eight on their participation in the Cash for Trash and Recycle Program. Where are they at? There they are.
All right, how we doing? All right, where do we pick up trash at?
Right next to the Circle K on the highway.
Circle K on the highway, okay. Did you get a lot?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, congratulations. Thank you for helping keep our city clean. This is a check for Burt Tech for three hundred dollars. And this is a check from the City of Twenty-Nine Palms for three hundred dollars.
Thank you so much. Did you want pictures? Cindy, do you want pictures? We can take some pictures for us legit. Yeah, we gotta put on Facebook if it's not real. Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Ramirez reports the meetings attended, Councilwoman Ramirez.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for your patience today. I attended the Easter sunrise service put on by the Twenty-Nine Palms Ministerial Association, the Special Olympics, the Wingon Egg Hunt, the Youth Council City, Youth Olympics? I think I wrote youth twice. The Morongo Basin Fire Egg Hunt and the East Valley Regional Steering Committee for Homelessness. And I also met with multiple constituents regarding various issues such as new developments, public records requests, family-friendly events, and TIVIT. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Youth Olympics put on by the Youth Council. I attended the East Desert Regional Steering Committee. I also attended the Special Olympics at the Yucca Valley High School. I attended Wingonitz's Easter Extravaganza. I attended the Sunrise Service, and I even showed up to service with Councilmember McCarthy Wright at his church Gospel Fellowship. I attended the Morongo Basin Housing Solutions Team meeting, and we had two Toastmasters meeting. One of them for Sexual Assault Awareness Month where Ms. Gina Pliss from Partners Against Violence actually spoke, and I also met with many constituents.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wright?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Good Friday service at Little Church of the Desert, and I attended the Sunrise Service at Freedom Plaza, and the Easter Resurrection Service, had a Gospel Fellowship. And, yeah, that's it. We getting ready for football, so. Bring those kids out to the Warhawks. We getting ready.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a basin transit meeting, went over the budget, getting ready for next year. Had a Mojave Desert Air Quality District meeting in Victorville. Then I had another meeting in San Bernardino for the San Bernardino County Transit Authority meeting. Also attended the strategic plan, you guys forgot to mention that. You attended two days with the strategic planning, everybody was there. And then I also had a Mountain Desert Measure Eye meeting. The meeting lasted about twenty minutes and we spent ten million dollars, so that was a pretty good meeting. It was all pre-planned stuff, so, all roads. And I'm sorry I missed the Youth Olympics and the Special Olympics. I was actually out of town on business on both those days, so. I'm sorry I missed those, I really enjoyed those days.
I missed one, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right, also, I attended the Track and Field Event at the high school, and Aaron Haney broke the long jump record, twenty-point-eight, yeah, twenty-point-eight feet, so. Oh, yeah, I did that too, the basin transit.
All right. Happy April, everyone, we see each other all April, and happy belated Easter. I think it was someone's birthday this month? Oh, since this is her first birthday on council, I don't sing, so who can sing out there? Yes, go ahead, Mac, you want to start it? Yeah, you have that Barry White voice. All right, let's go.
Everybody ready?
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Councilwoman Ramirez. Happy birthday to you.
All right.
Thank you.
She made me do that. Like, all right, meetings I attended, first quarter NCO, the meeting of the quarter for the Base Awards luncheon. I did two days of awesome strategic planning, and most of y'all in this audience are with me and all y'all up here. Very informative, and I think we got a lot of things going forward from that meeting, so it looks good. Personal Subcommittee Meeting, Budget Committee Meeting, and Meeting with Citizens, and also did the Youth Olympics. I did not make it to the Special Olympics. I will say thank you to all the services that did something for Easter. All the morning services, Easter egg hunt, San Bernardino County Fire Department did theirs also, thank you for that. Great turnout, Easter. Everyone's in here doing church stuff and being great, I was in Las Vegas, so I feel kinda bad. So, but, it was for my daughter's tournament, wasn't out there on my own, I would rather been here than hearing four hundred girls screaming volleyball in a little building, so. Still hurting. All right, so we're moving on, okay, Consent Calendars. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are to be considered routine by the City Council and will be interacted by one motion in the form listed. Any item may be removed from the Consent Calendar and considered separately by the City Council. The public will be given opportunities to comment on the Consent Calendar items prior to the City Council action. Counsel, anything? Public, no, back up here for a motion.
I'll move the Consent Calendar.
Second.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved five-oh.
All right, as we move from Consent Calendar, there is none. Public hearings, number fourteen.
All right. Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annual report we have to do, telling, acknowledging our building permit activity report. And this report goes on to the state, this is the state's form, we gotta use it. We were assigned one thousand and forty-seven units back in twenty twenty-one to build by the year, the end of twenty twenty-nine. So far, we have built somewhere around eighty. That means nine hundred and something left by the end of twenty twenty-nine. We are not unique in this situation. Virtually every jurisdiction in the state of California is in the same boat. But this is our report, this is what we actually did. So our recommendation is to accept this report and have us forward it on to the state.
Counsel, anything? Anyone from the public? No? All right.
If there's questions or dialogue, it's gonna pass, then I won't say anything.
Public, open? Good, closed, back up here.
I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to accept the report and file it.
Second.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince? Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved five-oh.
All right, moving on to fifteen, General Plans Task Report.
Okay, this is another annual report that we are mandated to do by the state, basically outlining any and identifying any general plan amendments we did in the prior calendar year. We did none. The last amendment to the general plan we did was the Equity and Social Justice Amendment in twenty twenty-three. And again, this is our report we gotta do, and this is our report.
All right, council questions? Open the public? Close the public? Back up here.
I move that we accept the report.
Second that.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery? Approved five-oh.
Number sixteen?
Okay, this is a Development Code Amendment that does what we would, what staff considers two fairly minor things. We found some inconsistencies within our own code and between our code and state law. The first one, there was an inconsistency as to when the Planning Commission's start date is and when their chair and vice chair are chosen. So if we, if the council approves this, then the terms will begin in the first meeting in March following a council election. And the chair and vice chair will be chosen at the same time. Currently, the code has the terms beginning in February and the chairs chosen in April for some reason, so we're trying to just correct that discrepancy. Secondly, that's, the last two reports you just saw is an example of our Development Code mandating things that are not consistent with, procedurally with the state law. State law does not mandate a public hearing on those items, so in the future, we'll just put these reports on consent or discussion potential action items, so. But we do need to modify the Development Code to allow us to do that. So we're recommending that you find this Development Code Amendment exempt from CEQA and adopt the ordinance and approving the Development Code Amendment.
Counsel? Open the public? Close the public? Back up here.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the staff recommendation on chapter nineteen point oh-six and chapter nineteen oh-four.
Second. Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildery?
Aye.
Approved five-oh.
Number seventeen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another Development Code Amendment that has been studied quite a bit before the Planning Commission. There's been numerous studies on it. And we could go into a deep dive if the council would like. There is no rush on this, this was meant to be a cleanup of the Development Code to fix inconsistencies and unclarities in the current code as far as like minimum lot size and densities and all that. We do recommend that the City Council approve of the Development Code, find the project exempt from CEQA and adopt the ordinance, approving the Development Code Amendment. I know we received two letters late, and I think at least one of the speakers is here tonight, so. Yeah, you should have received them. Yep.
Can we go back to that one chart, though?
Yeah, sure. So I can do this back.
Thank you.
So we, the crux of it is we split off commercial campgrounds from RV parks, and there's certain things in here that were just simply not clear in the current code. We're subject to interpretation, which we don't particularly care for because it makes it hard to interpret and hard to enforce. So this is, this happens to be RV parks, and this is mobile home parks. So again, we can go into a deep dive if the council wishes. There is no hurry to approve this Development Code Amendment, so if the council decides this is warranting a further study, we can always continue it.
Counsel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I actually think that we should probably study this a little bit more before we make a decision.
That's fine. What else?
Yeah, awesome, okay, even better. All right. Pat Flanagan? That's not Pat Flanagan.
Pat apologizes she couldn't be here tonight, but she sent me her letter and asked me to come read it into the record, so that's what I'm doing. I concur with those who are not against campgrounds or RVs but believe commercial uses like those enter consideration should be in tourist commercial zoning. If there is not enough appropriate commercial zoning, let's open the general plan and figure out where it should go. The new code sets density for commercial campgrounds at fifteen sites per acre and at twelve sites per acre for RV parks. The minimum parcel size for both is five acres. So deducting space for parking and restrooms, we're looking at local residents living next door to sixty-five campsites or forty-five RVs on five-acre parcels, more or larger parcels. Issues that must be addressed: air quality. Are the connecting two-lane roads dirt or paved? In both cases, there will be increased traffic. If streets are dirt, the adjacent residents and campers will experience decreased air quality, airborne dust when campers arrive or depart. She's got a CEQA element codes in here, which I'm not gonna bother to read. If they are allowed to tow off-road vehicles and ride them, the air quality conditions will deteriorate even further. Will code enforcement be available as needed? With increased traffic, the roads will deteriorate. Are these roads on the list of city-maintained roads? Noise. Will there be an onsite camp house to maintain quiet hours to ensure sleep for neighbors, present psychological responses, and in general, avoid annoyance? We all know how energetic drunk campers can get when they believe no one is watching or listening. The Jashitree National Park has experience with this, and we've all seen and heard about it. Will code enforcement be available as needed? Wildlife linkages and rare species. Will these camping areas be in or adjacent to wildlife linkage areas or rare species? Will dogs be allowed on leash, barking? This is both a noise and a conservation issue. Will code enforcement be available as needed? Home values. If campgrounds and RV areas with air quality, noise, and conservation concerns are in locations adjacent to neighborhoods, home values will decrease. Proper sighting can avoid this problem. Thank you for your continuing consideration on the location of future campgrounds and RV parks. Yours truly, Pat Flanagan.
Thank you. Hey, stay up there. I just saw your name. I shouldn't have been going back and forth, I'm not gonna do that to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mine is not very long. First of all, I want to remind everyone that when this first came before the Planning Commission in, I think, fall twenty twenty-three outside of the study session, that staff recommended that rural living zoning be exempted from this. That was the staff recommendation. Several residents spoke to that at that meeting, and then after that, when it came back the second time, several developers showed up, and then, so the Planning Commission went the opposite direction and put the rural thing back in. So this issue has flipped back and forth somewhat. It's not out of the blue that there's some controversy about whether or not there should be camping and rural living zoning or RV parks, even though that's what the ordinance has been with the CUP for some time. I just want to say I endorsed everything that, you know, Pat said. I'm not against RVs, and I'm not against campgrounds. I just believe that they should be in tourist commercial or commercial zoning, and I think we should also open up the general plan and reconsider where those areas are. And you might say that a lot of rural living land isn't near homes or neighborhoods, but, you know, in order to do the bathroom requirement that's on this thing, you're gonna have to have water. The water lines are going to be near existing homes and existing neighborhoods. So they are gonna land near neighborhoods. And I also want to point out this irony in this agenda, which is that the item that you're considering now is using prime residential real estate, perfect for much-needed homes for less-expensive builds like commercial campgrounds and RV parks, while one of your discussion items down below is addressing the continued stalling of using residential real estate as intended for self-build homes. By allowing developers to use residential real estate for an ongoing source of revenue on a relatively inexpensive build, aren't you undermining encouraging developers to fulfill a real need? aren't you undermining encouraging developers to fulfill a real need, which is housing? I hope you give this some consideration as you think about the votes, both on this item and on the item later. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Susan Piplo?
Hello, I actually don't have anything specifically prepared on this topic other than I did attend the planning commission sessions surrounding this discussion. And as well as city council, when they kicked it back. I felt that the planning commission, as well as staff, gave some good direction, and I feel that they really looked into it deeply. Without getting into the minutia of rural living, I can say that I support commercial tourism. And I feel that that's an appropriate location for RV parks and camping, as well as public land. For those of you who were in strategic planning, which is you, but not necessarily here, I feel we should be using city public land for RV parks, so I completely support that. As far as rural living, I'll leave that discussion up to you. But I do appreciate the time that the staff and the planning commission put into this, and I hope that you heed their recommendations. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm going to say it right now. John Tally Jones?
Thank you. My statements are less nuanced than what preceded them. As I understand it, and I hope I don't mischaracterize this proposed revision to the development code. In its current form, it allows up to seventy-five campsites on a five-acre rural living parcel. This seems like a monumentally terrible idea. Imagine living for the peace and quiet out here and waking up one morning to find that Burning Man has moved in on the parcel next door. Overall, I think it's bad city policy to surrender valuable residential property to for-profit entities. And I note that this particular proposal was initiated by Hip Camp. It's an approach that will lead to the STR-ification of every square inch of the desert. Campgrounds belong on parcels which are properly zoned for commercial tourism. I also think that the city's regular granting of conditional use permits is an inappropriate way of getting around zoning restrictions. Pardon the pun, but this policy feels like death by a thousand cups. Please reject this proposal change. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Then we have Pat. Emails from Cindy, we read them, and then we have one from, where'd he go? Robert Evans, Inland Empire representative. So we have those two emails for public record to be posted, and back up here. Back up here.
Thanks, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As stated before, I think that we probably shouldn't move forward with this, this policy recommendation until we actually do a little bit more studying. But I will echo some of the community members in the audience that I don't think that campground should be in rural living residential lots.
All those in favor to table?
Is this tabled off calendar or to a date certain?
Off calendar for now. Do I even do it? I don't want to rush something for a date. Let's just do it right. Okay. All right, moving on. Discussion of potential action items, number eighteen. Confirming the cost of abating six zero four five Adobe Road.
All right, so this has been an ongoing graffiti issue that we finally got the consent of the property owner to go ahead and abate through city staff. And the property owner is well aware that they will have to reimburse the city in one way, shape, or form. This is, what you see on the, on the screen here is the final cost of labor and supplies and filing fees and et cetera, et cetera. So what we're asking is that the city council accept the cost of the graffiti abatement and to direct the property owner to either pay or allow us to put a special assessment on the property.
Counsel, questions? Nobody? Anybody? All right.
Is that a yes?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's nobody.
I make a motion to accept this recommendation.
Second. Councilmember Mince? Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Right, number nineteen, contract amendment for Charles Abbott Associates?
All right, Charles Abbott Associates provides some very invaluable services to the city, including the city engineer, the, so the building inspectors and city building official and other resources as the city may require from time to time. We haven't updated their, they have not updated their fees for quite some time. So what we are recommending is we accept their contract amendment as is shown here with the increases as they're shown, and it's roughly a five percent increase per their, five percent per year increase that they've agreed to previously. So we've negotiated that with our finance folks, and we're happy with their contract amendment.
Questions, counsel?
You said a five percent year increase.
Yeah, yeah.
For how many years?
Right, so let me get that to you. So the, Charles Abbott has provided services since nineteen ninety-three, and the last time the contract was amended was in the year twenty twenty. So this is about once every, once every few years, we have to come back and officially set this up.
Can we get a, something in writing five percent year increase for X amount of years?
It's in there.
Oh, that was my question. I'm sorry.
Yep.
Back up here.
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation for the contract with Charles Abbott.
Second.
What is going on?
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mince?
Aye.
Mayor Bildering?
Aye.
Approved five oh.
Number twenty, update on self-building housing project?
Very good. Thank you very much, Mayor. So as the council knows and as the community knows, we have been evaluating the idea of going out and acquiring lots. We have been contemplating partnering with a home builder that has the infrastructure in place to identify families and qualify families who can essentially build a home that they ultimately could live in, assuming they meet certain financial criteria. And the city would participate or support this activity by acquiring the lots and then donating in those lots to the home builder. And so the city has been working on this for some time and has been working, has reached out to a couple of different firms, most notably the Coachella Valley, Coachella Valley, CVHC, Coachella Valizing Housing Coalition, CVHC. And also, we've reached out to Habitat for Humanity. And so I know that the city attorney, he is here tonight in part to talk about this. His, he and his team have been working with CVHC to process through some of the required documents that would be necessary for the council presumably to feel comfortable with moving forward with the acquisition of these residential lots. And then ultimately, what are some of the implications of a long-term partnership? And so with that, Mr. Munoz, would you like to contribute?
I really was just prepared to answer questions. I didn't realize that you were expecting an affirmative presentation from me.
Oh, yeah.
We have been looking at this issue for some time. We have some concerns about it in terms of making sure that we cross the i's and dot the t's if this is something the council wants to do. When a city uses what are called restricted funds, which housing funds are restricted funds, they have to be used for housing-related projects. There are a bunch of conditions that go along with that. So if we buy property, the proposal that we evaluated six months, call it ago, was for the city to buy some property, turn that over to CVHC. They would then have folks that they identify come and build homes. The individuals that build the homes would be qualified to be able to meet the criteria that has to go along with homes that are restricted for affordable housing, which is the restriction that would be on our funds. The tricky part from a city standpoint is there is ongoing monitoring that is required. You have to make sure that every year that the houses continue to be occupied by persons who qualify, that if someone doesn't come in and get a sweetheart deal on a, on a piece of property with restricted funds and then turn around and sell it for full market rate. That's kind of the primary issue that is required. But it, there's a lot of paperwork involved. It's been a concern to us in terms of how that would work from the city's standpoint. And if there are different ways to structure this proposal where the city wouldn't have those obligations. In, in some of the due diligence we've done with CVHC, we've seen that they have used other structures that didn't require the city to donate land, which then causes, you know, the issues that come up. Where they've actually gone out and acquired the land on their own. So we've kind of made some inquiries with their legal counsel about, you know, are those possible things that could occur out here? And I'm not sure what the reasons are. There could be very good reasons for this. But we've, we've reached out to CVHC asking for background and materials, and we just haven't received it. So, you know, kind of our due diligence was kind of stalled out a couple of months ago, and we just haven't received any additional information from them.
Thank you. Patrick, Keith, do you have anything that you wanted to contribute? Or kind of, kind of same, same situation?
Same situation.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, so really then, it would be appropriate fitting for the council to ask staff any questions in terms of any opportunities or any concerns or anything, anything that we've observed? So does the council have any questions?
No, I don't have any, any questions. We've, we've been kind of going over this for the last two years, and so I think that we've started to get to a point where we've ironed out a lot of the wrinkles with this. Now it's, we've come to the point whether or not, is the city willing to invest in their community? Right, and I think that's the question. Is the city ready to invest in homeownership? Because that's going to add to the quality of life of our city. And, and I'm going to say that I'm going to make that motion today, that the city give direction, or the council give direction to staff to move forward with purchasing ten lots, to do a self-help construction program. I think it's very important that we do this. We just had our housing element numbers that just, that we're not meeting. You know, and I think that we owe it to our residents to do this.
Question, when you talk to the, when you talk to, have they got any applications, any? It's a ten, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And a minimum, is it minimum or something?
Yeah, it is.
For housing, like?
Yeah, that's right. That, so, so that's, I think, one of the, one of the wrinkles, is that. So CVHC has, has explained in some of the conversations I've had with them, and it's been a little bit difficult to connect, that they are going to wait until we acquire the lots and own the lots before they begin trying to recruit individuals to occupy the homes. And so that seems like a bit of a leap of faith, because if the city goes out and acquires the lots, they are acquiring the risk of land ownership. So if somebody trips and falls, the city could be sued. If there is hazardous material that's dumped on the property, we would be liable for the cleanup. And so there's been a little bit of a disconnect in terms of they're not going to start the recruiting effort until the city acquires the lots, even though the city, of course, has the ability. They've identified some lots. There's actually a couple of different areas that have identified the potential for lots. And so there's been that bit of a, kind of a disconnect.
The biggest challenge from, from a city standpoint of getting ahead of CVHC or whoever we might be partnering with on, on this kind of an issue is if we purchase the lots with restricted funds, housing funds, then the lots have to be used for affordable housing. And so if we commit to doing that and then end up not being able to meet the need, we're kind of stuck with the lots that are restricted that way. In theory, you could turn around and sell the lots and put the money back into the housing fund. But there are a lot of restrictions anymore on selling property because of revisions to the Surplus Lands Act that occurred a couple of years ago. So, you know, there could be some, you could get stuck holding, if it's ten lots, you know, ten lots, and having a problem using them. Not to say that that's an actual, you know, concern, but it's something that certainly needs to be evaluated before, in my opinion, that you'd want to, you know, invest in the lots. But a lot of this property acquisition stuff that we're talking about now is, there were a lot of complex issues with it that I'd be a little more comfortable talking about with you in closed session. If we identify specific lots that we're interested in potentially purchasing, you know, then we can talk through the, you know, nuts and bolts of each specific lot and what, you know, some challenges could be. But at a really high level, just understand, once you use restricted housing funds to buy land, you have to use it for affordable housing purposes. And it's not as easy as it was ten years ago. If it doesn't work out, you just flip the land and put the money back in your housing fund.
Sure, thank you. And so I really appreciate that, Mr. City Attorney. I just wanted to touch on a comment that the city manager had stated about. Once the city owns land and we, we're liable, if someone trips and falls, the city owned land all over the city. We're sitting on city-owned land now, and so I don't necessarily see that as a problem. So, and then with, along with the, you know, and the restricted funds, Mr. City Attorney, if that's a concern, then maybe we don't need to use restricted funds. Maybe we can use unrestricted funds.
That is certainly a prerogative, counsel.
From what budget?
From the general fund.
Okay. So what happens if we, let's say we purchase the ten lots, right? And then we can't find the ten, because these qualifications are, are pretty strict from what I looked at. You need to have a good credit score. You need to have a stable job. And you need to be able to dedicate forty hours a week, I believe. What happens if we don't find the ten families that qualify for this program?
So we're not responsible for finding those families. All of that recruitment comes through the nonprofit, the nonprofit organization, the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. And they've got this track record going back all the way to the early nineties where they've been successful doing this program. They've built seventy homes in Imperial.
Are they going to guarantee that these ten lots and ten homes will be given to Twenty-Nine Palms residents?
I don't, well, I.
Based, based on my conversations, no.
So I think that they would prioritize, in my conversations with them, they would definitely prioritize Twenty-Nine Palms residents. But if there's not ten families in Twenty-Nine Palms to build these homes, I don't see anything wrong with inviting new people to our community for homeownership.
Well, the gentleman, that was one of the questions that came up when they were here in their interview, or basically their program. And yes, he did indicate that that wasn't a guarantee, but we're going to be using our taxpayer money to buy these lots. And then we're also going to be, use our taxpayer money to monitor this. It has to be for fifty-five years. So I'm, you know, for him, for them to say, well, we can bring in, you get two in Twenty-Nine Palms, but we're going to bring eight.
So, so once those families, Councilmember Mince, once those families move to Twenty-Nine Palms, those families then become taxpayers of Twenty-Nine Palms.
Well, that, I, I hear what you're saying, but we're, there's, to me, there's just a lot of ifs in this thing. Well, I hear what you're saying, but we're, there's, to me, there's just a lot of ifs in this thing. I kind of like what the city attorney just said. Why is it, why don't they use the option of them getting the lots? And we just go into a contract saying, they get the lots, they own them, and then if they get the 10 families, we pay for the lots. Can we do that, Mr. Attorney? Is that, is that what you were talking about? They get the lots themselves first and so that kind of leaves that whole gray area out.
That, pardon me, that's certainly an option. And we can buy the lots from them. But in other models that they use, like down in Palm Desert, they purchased the lots and then it became, there's sort of a partnership agreement, which I only know high level on it. I can't tell you all the details of it. But at a high level, my understanding is they purchased the lots, they arranged for the individuals that qualified to come out and build the homes on them. And then the city participated by doing the long-term monitoring.
I'd feel way more comfortable with that, as far as them buying the lots and then we come into agreement that we would purchase them after we got the 10. What would be the difference?
Well, the difference is that we've already went into a contract with them and we've had an understanding. And so now we're moving the goalposts. We met with the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. These concerns should have been brought up two years ago. They're not going to be able to purchase these lots because their funds are grant, are grant restricted. They can't use these funds to buy, to buy the actual land because the government prevents them to do that. This is why we're stepping in and partnering with private enterprise.
When we, when we made that agreement with them, I thought we gave them money.
No. No, we entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with them, which expired. And, you know, again, there may be very good reasons for this. I don't mean for this to come across negative. But, you know, it expired because we never got from them what we needed back in terms of our due diligence. And even after it expired, we continued to reach out to them and ask for information, which we just haven't received.
Thank you.
And that was the other concern, that over this last two years, staff has reached out to them and they said there are a lot of times they never even contact, they never talked to them again for months. So that kind of concerns me. Why, if they were that interested really doing something here, why weren't they more present? Why didn't they come to our meeting?
Well, they came to our meeting, Mr. Councilmember.
Just once.
Yeah, and they get, well, most people that come to the city and want to do partnerships often only come once. So we can't just say that this organization is doing something. The fact of the matter is, we don't have any cards, right? We don't have any cards because they said that they, in our partnership, when we discussed this with them, that we were going to purchase those lots. And now we haven't purchased the lots. I wouldn't pick up the phone either, if we didn't have the cards.
Are you opening it?
I can. Are you, any questions?
Nope. I want to go to the public now. Scott Currie?
Good afternoon. Scott Currie, Currie Realtors. I've talked to some of you on the council, thank you, and city manager. We definitely need construction happening in 29 Palms. I started coming out here when I was seven years old. It hasn't changed a whole lot in my, those 60 years. If you don't do something now, I would encourage you to buy the 10 lots. I represented a nonprofit for 19 years. We purchased HUD properties. It's tricky. No matter how you do it, it's tricky, but you have to start. And the problem you're going to have is interest rates are six and a half, seven percent right now, and the qualifications are tough. So in order to, if they do a limited qualification, like I did on the HUD program, it was very difficult to get the buyer. They had to have $100,000 cash in order to qualify for the limited income program. So in Los Angeles, where we did, we did all of our Southern California, but Los Angeles, we got 6 million people to choose from. Here, you don't have that. It's going to be a little tougher than might be anticipated because of the qualifications needed to get the loan, even if you do kind of some kind of a lease option where they don't buy it for five years. But I encourage you, I like to buy in the 10 lots and get started. I've been out here for several months and I've been discouraged a little bit. Right now, we would spend $450,000 building a home that we could sell for $350,000. So I would encourage you to get started and work with any entity that wants to work and throw it out there. If they don't come up, somebody else will. I've got private sector money and they'll step up if your clients don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Bernard?
Hi, I want to echo what he said. I mean, you know, there's some things that the city does just because it's the right thing to do. And this is the right thing to do. This is the right thing to show your residents that you believe in them, that you believe in, if not residents of 29, maybe residents of the Marongo Basin. That we believe in affordable housing and we're going to take some steps to get there, even if they're small steps, even if it's only 10 houses, because those 10 houses will build generational wealth for those people, which is something that's not happening for 60% of this community right now, who are renters. So this is very, very crucial. And you guys talk as though this is like some new idea falling from the sky. Habitat for Humanity was founded in 1976. This has been, these kinds of partnerships have been going on for years and years and years. So I would really encourage you, if you have qualms about it, to take the time to talk to other communities that have done this. What have been the pratfalls? What have been the challenges of finding people for the homes? What have the things that have worked? What are the things that haven't worked? Has anybody done that research? That's what I think you should do before coming to some kind of decision on this. But frankly, I think you should move forward because it's just a positive vote for your community. Thank you.
I like all the clapping, but when it doesn't go your way, I hope you don't clap and get mad. I'm not talking about this agenda. I'm talking about other things. All right, Thelma Wingate?
Hello and good evening. I've been a resident of 29 Palms for 25 years now. And like the gentleman said, there hasn't been very much change, positive change. I believe this housing thing would be great for our community. There's a lot of people that are, that work very hard and they can't get nowhere because they don't have proper housing. I am one of those people. I was displaced for a while. And if it wasn't for somebody looking out for me, I would probably still be displaced. And I work, five days a week, eight hours a day. So this will open up doors for our community to, you know, just help people that need help, just a little help, you know? I don't have too much more. That's it. Sorry.
Thank you. Shane DeFalco?
Hello and good evening, Mayor, City Council, and fellow residents of 29 Palms. My name is Shane DeFalco. I am in favor of item 20. I believe we need a program like Habitat for Humanity here in 29 Palms. There are so many without a home due to financial means. Whether you are considered low income or low middle income, I believe everyone should have the opportunity to own a home. There are so many family and friends I know that have lost a home or apartment for rent and it's not always due to not being able to afford it. But because owners decide to sell, therefore leaving their tenants to find other means of housing. Which with the current economy and lack of affordable housing, it becomes a disaster for many families and individuals. I believe a program like this can help serve our community in a positive way and it would create a positive dynamic for individuals or families, which would lead to stability that most of us are in need of. It would give individuals and families a chance to own their home and to never have to face homelessness because an owner wants to sell or increase the cost of rent every year. I do believe it's better to invest in something you could eventually own than to keep renting, knowing that any given day, housing could be taken away from you, even after all the years you've paid or invested in. And with that said, I would like to be one of those families. It is very hard. I work my tail off as much as I can. And I would like nothing more than to be able to provide for my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane DeFalco?
Good evening, council. I wanted to point out that at our fast food restaurants here in 29, you can make 20 bucks an hour. That's what it starts at. A lot of times, it's not full-time, it's part-time hours. Because of that increase and with minimum wage going from 16 to 17 now, the increase has made a lot of jobs here in 29 do part-time hours. That being said, the brand-new condos at Bagley and Sunnyvale, the two-bedroom, two-bath, start at $2,300. That's how much they cost. When you add up regular workers, fast food, State of Brothers Grocery Outlet, Dollar General, they bring home, if they get full-time hours, $2,600 a month, after taxes. You know, the proverb says that the home is where the heart is. This implies that one's true sense of belonging and emotional comfort is found in the place where they feel the most loved, secure, and connected. So many of our community members are in need of affordable housing, stable housing. This program is an amazing opportunity to help those in need obtain permanent housing. With these homes, they'll be needing to help each other, contributing their time. It pulls in other community members to come help them as these homes are being constructed. Bringing the whole community in as a team. Also, I want to point out that if the home is good and people are securing their home, their children thrive. And we want our children to thrive, not worry, oh, we're going to be evicted next month because the house is sold or the rent went up and now we can't afford it. So we want all our community members to build and feel safe here in 29 Palms. And I think this is the opportunity. Wade, the pros and the cons. Don't worry about how many families you will find because I know all of you up there know we have plenty of families. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Harper?
Good evening. Thank you very much. I think this is a wonderful idea. But my question to you is that you wonder about people having credit and a job. Did we do the research of how, you know, what the credit score looks like? Do we need to go out in the community and rally people to submit applications just to the city so you can see that you do have people that have 700, 690 credit scores and have a job? There's some of us that are homeowners and some that are business owners and we don't even own a home. We're just renting. So I was just wondering about that. Did anybody do the research on that to find out about the credit score? And tell me, if we need to go out and rally, I can do that, just to come back to let you all know that we do have people in the community. Thank you.
Did you want to answer that? Did you want to answer that? That's not us. It's the coalition that asked these requirements? Yeah, the information's definitely on their website. It's attainable, you know? So I don't understand, you know, they've been doing this. They do this all over the country. But somehow we're sitting here thinking like, we're not going to find 10 families in our own community. In a city of 30,000 people, we got Marines, you know, that are retiring that might want to build a house here in 29 Palms. So I don't understand it.
Okay. You know what? A couple of years ago, I apologize. I shouldn't have waited for that. A couple of years ago, we did a community outreach. We brought some realtors out from Riverside to do low-income housing. We had over 40 people at Patriotic Hall. And they was all qualified, about 15 to 20 people qualified to purchase homes. But they couldn't purchase none up here because y'all didn't have none available. We did that. So I understand that it's for Coachella. But to let y'all know, there is people in here that can afford housing. They can't afford the high-priced housing, you know? Basis offering $1,500 with everything included. Not every, a single people can't afford that, especially if they have children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I actually attended that event and so with the prior city manager, Mr. Frank Loquino as well. And so there were certainly 40 people in there that were interested in housing. And so I just think we need to, you know, after two years of bringing this back to council, you know, the public is getting tired, in my opinion.
Carlos Blandon?
Same down to long. Carlos Blandon, Wizard of Red Cloud, trail name coyote. Last time we've been in these participating meetings, that we're in a deficit, I think that's what we heard. We're going to be buying land that's for sale. Why don't we use our resources to go after abated property after these landlords making waste of our community? You know, there are these people out here who don't care about these majestic desert sands. Another point I was just writing right now was, as memory serves, as being a Coachella Valley local, the Coachella Valley Coalition, if memory serves, they have a lot of legal issues with fraud and corruption, just like the Desert Sand Unified School District. Many of those people failed me growing up in that valley as a student, as even a resident. But let's move on into something more historic. Adobe's of 29 Palms. By Ma'ad Karissa Russell. How are things with old Adobe? Is the spring still flowing there? Do great palms still welcome travelers? Was golden dreams a treasure rare? How are things with old Adobe? Do miner's spirits linger there, seeking gray walls of Adobe? Do fragrance fill the air, fragrance of morning coffee, as miners by their campfires kneel, turning flapjacks, cooking bacon, each stirring on a trusty heel? How are things with old Adobe? Do Bill McHaney still come there from his home in Music Valley, greeting comrades camping where? Kinder's spirits surely linger as the old stones come, as the old stage comes rallying by, stopping to change tired horses, then on to dale, neath burning skies. Do spirit freighters pass Adobe with heavy-laden eight-horse teams wearing bysanded road polling, all in and out like strange old dreams? Things have changed for old Adobe, inevitably, yet this well. Miners men have other campfires, other homes in which to dwell. May each have found some new Adobe, found richer ore in larger veins, found treasure more than old Asaien, found pockets of eternal gains. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Friendly?
Good evening, City Council, members of the community. I want to echo everything that Mr. Councilman Scott has said and the people that had come up before me. Unfortunately, I don't have a really cool poem to read, so you're going to have to just suffer without one. However, I think the city council needs to start thinking outside the box a little bit. You just had a report that we had 989 more homes that have to be built in 29 Palms area. And you have, this is 2025, you've got four years to get it done. There's no way you're going to even get a tenth of those homes built. We're going to have to start thinking outside the box and quit being closed-minded. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. All right, close. Back up here.
Yeah, Mr. City Attorney, there was a statement that was made that the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition has had numerous legal issues. In your, in your research, have you identified any issues with the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition?
I came across two lawsuits where they were sued for housing discrimination. One of those lawsuits, best as I could tell from the time I had to look it up, was dismissed. The court determined that it wasn't founded. The other lawsuit was, resulted in a consent decree, a settlement, basically, where everybody denied liability, but they paid. They paid a settlement amount and basically were deemed to, let me rephrase that. They were required to adjust their conduct going forward, you know, even though there is no admission of liability.
Should we be concerned?
I'm less concerned about that than I am about the fact that we've asked them for material for months and months and months and haven't received it yet. That's a red flag. That's a red flag.
Yeah. So with this self-help construction program, if we purchase these ten lots, we can work with any nonprofit organization to do this. It doesn't have to be the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. But if we keep waiting, those land lots are actually gonna, those prices are gonna keep going up. And so... No, that was a statement, sorry.
Can I add a little bit more to the litigation part of it? So like Ms. Cindy Bernard said, you know, she was asking if any of us called our surrounding neighborhoods, and so I did. And I did speak to some people from the city of Morano Valley. There was a lawsuit on that. I wasn't able to pull up much information. But if you, you know, Attorney, we knows if you could please try to find something on that. And then the actual, the conciliation agreement that you're talking about, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, is the agency that came in to mitigate this. So the initial claim was that, you know, part of the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition was part of a Civil Rights and Fair Housing Act, or a few of them violations. Again, they did not admit to guilt, but they did decide to settle out of court. And so while I personally feel that there is, you know, there is a housing shortage, we need to do something for our community, I also would never want to put my community in a position to be...
Exploited?
I was like, let me see. I would never want to put my community in a position to work with a litigious organization or to, you know, put you in possible... No, not liability. I don't want to say harms way, but I would never want anyone's civil rights to be violated.
Absolutely. And as the City Attorney said, that there has been no guilt with this particular organization.
But they're on the HUD program, where they have, it's part of the agreement. They have to report to HUD.
The city has been sued, ma'am. Our city has been sued.
I'm not talking about our city. I'm talking about this specific property, item, agenda.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is I just feel like there's so much scrutiny around this specific organization when the city right now has been contracting with organizations that are not even good standing with certain state agencies. And so I just find it very contradiction, you know. I don't understand why there's so much going on here with this.
Well, part of this is, this has been going on. They've only been here once, and the staff has asked them over and over again for information. And either they didn't, haven't provided it, or they just gave very little. So I'm not ready to move forward with this until we have some concrete information as far as where we're going with this. I'm, you know, I always thought to myself, if this organization, if we said, "Look, we'll buy the lots when you get the folks to sign up." And we signed a contract saying that, why, we're the city of Twenty-Nine Palms. Why wouldn't they accept that contract? I mean, that would, to me, that's a pretty simple contract to sign. If I get the folks to go into a contract, then we turn the lots over to them instead of us buying these lots ahead of time and still not having these questions answered. So if all these questions were answered, I'd be more than willing. But folks, you gotta remember, when they came, they said these are three-hundred-and-four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses they're building. They're not building, you know, a hundred-thousand-dollar house where they can just go in there and... And there's a lot of maintenance that goes to this. And I just think the folks who are gonna, and this gentleman said, "You gotta have a hundred-thousand dollars to qualify, cash." I mean, that's...
Wait, I'm sorry. Say that again?
The realtor said that you had to have a hundred-thousand dollars.
That's not true.
Well, I'm just going by what he just told me.
Who was he?
He's a realtor. He says he does this stuff. So what I'm saying is, there's too many questions on the table for me to move forward at this point. It all sounds great, but I just, I'm ready to move forward if they're willing to less guarantee that we'll buy the lots after they get the ten people. I'll sign up right now. But I'm not ready to move forward until I get these questions answered from this company ahead of time.
They just, they just sent us information to the City Attorney's Office. He just said that.
They have not sent us the information we need. They have sent us some information. I reported to the council back in February in a confidential memo where we were on this. And I reported that, you know, after months and months and months of asking, they had finally given us something, but that was more than we needed. You know, I'm not trying to come across like I'm taking sides on this issue. You guys are putting me in the middle of something that I tried to deal with, you know, more discreetly. But the reality is, as I said in my private memo to you, there are a bunch of red flags going on that they haven't been responding to us, you know. And that's, but getting back to your other question, if you want to buy the properties, first of all, we have to identify properties. We have to go through a process of buying properties. But we certainly, if the council wants to make a policy decision just to go out and buy some properties that are gonna be used for, you know, affordable housing purposes, we can do that. And it doesn't commit us to do business with CVHC or Habitat for Humanity or anybody else. We can go through a process, a bid process if you wanted to, if you had properties like that. But, you know, if that's something you want to do, my recommendation to you is that you study it. You come up with a good strategy plan and that you don't do it as an off-the-cuff decision during an update agenda item without any meaningful analysis accompanying it.
Before we go forward, can this side conversation stop? Because you echo all the way up here. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing for the record. If we're going to use Twenty-Nine Palms citizens' money to make this purchase, then for me, it needs to be Twenty-Nine Palms citizens that are benefiting from this purchase.
So I don't think anybody is coming from L.A. to build a house in Twenty-Nine Palms through a program like this.
No, but you told me when we spoke before that if we couldn't find them, then you would invite people from down the hill to come.
I did not say, I said there would be people, they would, they would, they would reach out to people at a reasonable distance, people in Yucca Valley, Morongo Valley, Joshua Tree, Wander Valley, I mean, our unincorporated Spear of Influence. These are also places that they can also do recruitment as well. And I don't think that, I mean, just because...
And for the record, I want it documented that if we're gonna use Twenty-Nine Palms city money, I want it to be for people that already live here in Twenty-Nine Palms.
Right. Let's get back to...
May I clarify the hundred-thousand-dollar comment?
Sure.
Okay. The hundred-thousand dollars, the program I worked was a HUD program, Affordable Housing.
Hold on. Mr. Curry, hold on a second. Do we have to reopen?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay.
Be quick, sir.
Sure. It was an affordable housing program with a maximum income limit that was so restricted. That's why a lot of the buyers had to have major cash to buy the property, even though it was a low-income program. There was no limit on how much down payment. Had they had a big house, they sold, they could do that. So if you're, you'll have plenty of buyers from Twenty-Nine Palms, I assure you. There's buyers, there's tons of buyers out there that want affordable housing. There's school teachers, there's retired Marines, active Marines. You have the infrastructure here for Twenty-Nine Palms residents that clamor for affordable housing. The, if you follow income restrictions, they're gonna have the same problem. One lady told me there's some money available at three percent. I'm not familiar with the program. But at six percent or seven percent, you need to make eighty-five thousand a year to afford a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house in order to qualify. So that was my point.
I'd like to make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that we give direction to staff to inquire about the acquisition of ten residential vacant lots in the city of Twenty-Nine Palms for the self-help construction program.
When you say acquire, what do you mean?
I want them to examine and find the lots, and then we're gonna have a closed session about it and negotiate appropriately.
So you're saying find those ten lots?
Well, I think they've already found the ten lots, but I think we need to start looking at how we're gonna just, are we gonna start buying them?
Well, yeah, because the CVHC said they had to have the ten lots together. Now, what other folks are talking about is totally different. They're talking about buying lots and then putting a house on. But CVHC said they had to have the ten lots close together.
They have to be in the same neighborhood.
Right. Well, they said, right, they have to be close together.
Yeah. So, you know, with the Community Development Director has already done that research, and he's found several, he stated today, he's found several areas where those lots, where we could purchase those lots. I think we just need to move forward with actually acquiring these lots. Whatever, however that needs to be worded, I think that's what needs to happen tonight.
I think we need to identify ten people first.
There's ten people in the audience.
No, we need to qualify ten people.
Who's qualifying them?
Let's read the qualifications on their website, okay? You have to have good credit.
To have employment history. You have to have, and you cannot be over the low-income barrier.
What's the low-income barrier?
It says that it varies by their program. That's what it says on their website.
Okay. So, no, I hear you, and I appreciate everything you guys are saying. But I just think that this is a project that's being consistently stalled. And I'm gonna put this out here. When it's one of the, when it's a program that one of the other council members wants to push through, all of a sudden, it gets pushed through immediately.
No, you can't say that.
I will say it. I'm gonna say it tonight, actually. With certain nonprofit organizations that have been rushed through in the middle of the night, but I've been working on this for two years, and it's because you guys don't want to give me a win.
We have a lawyer who we pay.
You don't want to bet on your community.
We have a lawyer who we pay to give us legal guidance, and he's telling you that there's red flags.
You don't want to bet on your community. You don't want to bet on this people of Twenty-Nine Palms.
Stop. We're done. Here, we're going. Ms. Harper, I love your idea about what you said. If we can get Coachella Valley to come up here in Freedom Plaza for a day, and all those who are interested in Twenty-Nine Palms, and get that media out there to come and fill out those applications, see if they're qualified for that program, I thought I liked Ms. Harper's ideas she had a couple of years ago. If we can get them up here on the table, like, hey, this is what we have to offer, and everyone who wants it and needs this housing shows up, we get the word out. I'm pretty sure we get the word out. They show up, they apply, and to see if they meet the requirements. If they don't meet the requirements, we've done our due diligence to get their program out to the public. If they don't qualify, that's not a city's, that's not on the city. We're gonna do everything we can to get them to the right place. Is that something we can do?
I'm willing to do it if you'll provide the lunch for us.
Well, me and you will talk after. All right. But I think that's, we're gonna go back and forth. A win and all this is not about a win. It's about the city winning, not about individual wins. So let's not go there. How do we?
I want to be clear.
I already gave you, I gave you plenty of time to talk already. So is that something we can do? The city, do you guys like that idea?
Yes.
Okay, let's do this. Let's see, Mr. Senator?
Happy to do that.
Mr. Councilman Scott, is that a good idea to get your theme going?
Yes, sir. Yes, I appreciate it.
I'm trying to give you that win, and I want, I want, I want, I want us to win.
No, I want to clarify. It's not about me getting a win. Sometimes I just feel like when it's an idea that I have, there's always, there's always pushback. That's what I want to clarify.
Okay. Well, we gotta understand, when you're in politics, not, every idea is yours is a great one.
I'm the one that's being bullied.
Are we good? We good on that? So we don't have to, we don't have to do anything like crazy, right? Just get that done and then...
I'm happy to reach out to CVHC and have them come up here, have them do a workshop so they can sit down and they can explain, hey, here are the qualifications. You have to have a job. You have to have these things. Can you have a job and also dedicate forty hours a week to actually building your home? And so that is, I'm happy to put that together.
Okay, then we just gotta get that, once we get that date with them, then we gotta get this pushed out to everybody. And I need everyone's help out there to make sure this goes out to everybody. Tell your friends, tell your neighbors. All right? We good?
Yes, sir.
Can we move on to twenty-one now, counsel?
Yes.
Councilman Scott, can we move on to twenty-one? We got an answer. We got a, we got a plan, and I hope it works out for all of us. All right. Twenty-one, repurposing unhoned showers and resource center funds for the youth backpacks.
Thank you very much, counsel. And so let me just go to my page here. Let's see here. Okay, very good. So thank you for the opportunity to discuss this item. So counsel, on April second of this year, Ms. Lynette Ramirez had contacted the city to request a portion of the funds that had previously been allocated for homeless services. Take some of those funds and use them to support what Ms. Ramirez, what Ms. Lynette, has been working on. And that is, is that she has come up with ideas in order to give backpacks to schoolchildren, and they have a number of great little items within the backpacks for haircuts, health and beauty in those backpacks to help those kids start off their new school year. And so I believe that Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Lynette is here tonight, and she would like to provide a little bit more detail about her, her background, her organization, and the kids that would benefit.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Lynette Ramirez, and the name of my agency is Ready for Reading Book Club. We are 501(c)(3)C, and we deal with literacy and medical illiteracy and other needs of disadvantaged children and adults. I have also partnered with Angie from Wingin' It, and we get together to meet some of the community's needs and to ensure that some of our disadvantaged community members, children, families, and those that are, don't have a home, have some of their needs met. This seems like a big jump, a big, big jump, from a shower program to a backpack program. But it's really not, because the money was originally allocated for a shower program and a resource center. And a resource center is basically covering the needs of the community. So funding the project can still, funding my project can still align with the resource center. Resource centers provide education, counseling, and essential resources like food, clothing, and other community needs. So if there was a resource center, the community could go to the resource center to get backpacks and essential school supplies. The short-term impact is also significant, in that it provides essential school supplies. It'll improve children going to school, and it'll relieve those children's stress so that they have an opportunity to learn. The long-term impact, when students have necessary school supplies, it leads to increased attendance, better engagement in class, and a higher academic improvement. So as you can see, approving this project fosters a sense of shared responsibility for the well-being of the children. This won't be a program just for Ready for Reading Book Club. This won't be a program for Wingin' It. This is a community program to ensure that our older students, junior high and high school, and that's the demographic that is normally forgotten when they do backpack events, have what they need to succeed. This won't be just a backpack event, but also a resource fair for these children, where we will have the CHP, military recruiters, individuals from the college to help teach these children how to enroll in college. So it's not just a backpack event. From my understanding, and I could be wrong, but the funds were originally approved for this program in 2023 and was still on the table in 2025. So approval of this project technically shows the community that the council is not just gonna let money sit around where they can use that money to help out the community. So we don't have a resource center yet, but what we can do is use resources to help our community students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel? Questions? Nope.
Well, yeah.
Yep.
I guess the question I have is, is this, so you're requesting five thousand dollars?
Yes.
And how many students are you saying are gonna be serviced from this?
I don't have the package in front of me. The number is there. I think the number that we have is close to four hundred. It could be higher than that, because we are looking at bringing in other community partners. And the more partners we can bring in, the more junior high and high school students that we can...
Well, there's...
And we won't just, if students in elementary school, if they do show up, we're not going to turn them away.
Are there other programs like this?
Are there other programs like that? I mean, I know that height, the, the school district does, um, some backpack stuff and other.
There, there are a lot of, there's a lot of backpack programs out there. But communities don't need just one backpack event. And it works good when, when the community knows that there's additional backpack events out there. See, if you live up by the casino, you might not be able to get to the backpack event over at Little Church of the Desert, and vice versa. It also educates your community on the needs that disadvantaged students have when it comes to school supplies. So having more than one backpack event benefits the community.
How did you pick the teacher?
Pardon me?
You said one teacher is gonna get the remaining funds.
Um, the way that we will pick the teachers is basically looking at school histories of which teachers consistently got, um, Teacher of the Month, things along those lines.
So it's more than one teacher?
Um, yeah, we can spread it out. We did this last year, where we brought in, um, school supplies and teacher supplies, and we were able to provide teacher supplies to almost four different schools. So Aces, um, Palm Vista, the, um, Little Church of the Desert School, and the preschool that was out by the college. We all provided to tho, those schools with teacher supplies.
I forgot my other question.
So we're not just looking at a standard backpack event. These backpacks won't just be filled with pins and pencils. Children will also have the opportunity to get, um, clothing vouchers, shoe vouchers. If you look in the, um, paperwork that I gave you, I gave you information on clothing insecurity, on how twenty million children in the United States suffer from clothing insecurity. Twenty-nine Palms students, as if you see the numbers on page one, sixty-six, sixty-seven percent of your students in Twenty-Nine Palms High School are disadvantaged and low income.
Where are the clothing vouchers gonna come from?
The clothing vouchers? We are going to go out into the community and talk to local clothing stores, thrift stores, barber shops, beauty supply stores, and get them to give us a discount on products and on haircuts, and especially for African-American, um, students on braiding, and get the vouchers from them.
I'm gonna give a voucher from my clothing store also.
Do you have any, um, admin fees?
Pardon me?
Admin fees.
No, there is none. My, my agency does not allow anyone to be paid for their services, it's all volunteer.
We all go to the community, every penny.
Thank you.
You got it, probably the public?
I just wanna clarify a couple of things. Number one, although, um, Ms. Lynette and I have the same last name, there is no affiliation. We are not related or anything like that. Number two, I thank you for just stepping up and, and, and bringing this to the table. You know, I've, I've always been a big supporter of the, all the wonderful things that you do for our community, and I just wanted to say thank you for even just putting this together and being here today.
Yeah, I, I also wanna echo that as well, you know, Wingin' It and, uh, your nonprofit Ready for Reading Book Club. You guys have been, you know, feeding, um, our special needs, uh, youth and providing a, a safe space for them. For as long as I can remember, you've been doing resource fairs at your facility. You've, you've actually assisted during major impacts to our community, like the monsoons and the storms. And so I think that your commitment to our city and your dedication to our city is worthy of this, um, of this, of this grant.
You got it up here? To the public, Karen Harper?
Good evening, Karen Harper. I'm the owner of Janine's Beauty Supply in Twenty-Nine Palms. And I spoke to, with, um, with Ms. Lynette, and we are willing to voucher with the beauty supply, Women of Color, which we are a sponsor, me and my sister Carrie. We are willing to go out and help her with the teens on writing. You know, we, once every three months, Women of Color gets together, and we do a project for the teens as far as learning how to write, help them to get ready to do resumes, one-on-one, how to dress. So we will partner with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen DeFalco?
Greetings again. So my, I, I think the program sounds nice, but my concern is that the money would be coming from unhoused money. There is a lot of programs out there that do the bookbag giveaways. The Marango Unified School District does give out vouchers, so the kids could go to Ross and get brand-new pairs of shoes. They give out twenty-five-dollar gift cards to Walmart to get clothing. So, we have a lot of unhoused children that are not school-aged. They're not in the Marango Youth School District, or they're homeschooled, that would need type of services. And also just to remember that we're touching on summer soon, so a lot can happen between now and then with our desert heat. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Council.
Well, I guess the, this, 'cause it says on here that they've applied for the, um, um, the twenty-five, twenty-six nonprofit grant program that's, we, applications are gonna be reviewed May twenty-seventh. So, um, shouldn't this been just, shouldn't this gone through the committee first?
That's a separate grant, or it's something totally different.
Oh, so you're, you're asking, so you're gonna ask, well, that's not what this says.
That was, I, I apologize. Could you please, uh, expound, 'cause when I, I talked to staff, they had said that you'd also applied for the grant. So I, I would, I would be grateful for additional.
I applied for a grant that was online, that was for, through Park and Rec. That one is for books, for the children for the summer, and for free CPR classes.
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's totally, that's just something different. You're just, you're just basically asking for five thousand dollars. So, are you gonna have this before school's out? 'Cause school's out, like, in a month.
Well, it's a backpack event, so we're gonna have it for the kids going back to school in the fall.
So this is next year's budget we're talking about?
Yeah, this, well.
I mean, it's not next year's budget, it's gonna come out of this year's two-year budget, but it's gonna be used, um, before the school year starts.
Yes. To address, she had some good points. To address, you know, her point, we do also at these events do clothing giveaway for, um, those that are unhoused, for children, for pre-K. So we cover all of that when we do do our event. So even though it's a backpack event, it won't just be backpacks. It'll be a plethora of things to, um, meet the needs of the community, to, to address her concerns.
Yeah. I, um, I have a lot of faith in Wingin' It, because I see the work that you guys do in the community. You do a lot for the community, um, and you, I see it. I see it, so.
And then I would like to also add, one of the reasons that we put in there, hair care. And she had mentioned that the school district, they, um, they give vouchers for Ross and for Walmart. But that benefits that community. We're talking about vouchers that benefit the businesses of Twenty-Nine Palms. So the money is not going out of the community, but staying right here in the community.
And I'm not using any vouchers, I'm giving my clothes for free.
I think this is an amazing, I think it's amazing program, and I, I honestly think that we should go ahead and make an investment. Otherwise, these money, these funds that we had allocated for these resources are just gonna go back to the general fund at the end of the, um, at the end of the budget, um, the fiscal year, at the end of the fiscal year. And so, um, you know, we've, we've been very generous to a lot of nonprofits in our, in our community, and I think we can be generous to Ready for Reading Book Club as well.
We're done? Council? Motion? Does he have something to say?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and grant five thousand dollars to Lynette Ramirez's nonprofit Ready for Reading Book Club.
Second.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mints?
Aye.
Mayor Buildering?
Aye.
Approve five oh.
One love.
Well, that was easier than the last one. All right, twenty-two.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. And so this next item is a... So, animal care. So our community has got a lot of wonderful residents in it, and one of the important aspects of our community, and it's, it's deeply personal and moving for a lot of people, are our four-legged residents. Now, maybe some have wings, maybe some slither, uh, maybe some crawl slowly or hop. But generally speaking, our animal shelter plays a pivotal role in a, in a functional community, in a healthy community. And we've got here tonight the actual co-president of the Joshua Tree No Kill Animal Shelter, President Glenn Harris. And he is graciously taking his time to come down. And they are putting on a fundraiser event, and I'll let Glenn talk more about that here momentarily. And one of the things that the No Kill, the No Kill Animal Shelter, the Joshua Tree No Kill Animal Shelter, there's been a big change back in December, in fourth quarter of last year. And that change was new leadership, uh, different board members. And they have become really a wonderful partner for the city of Twenty-Nine Palms in supporting our shelter with the mission, the shared mission of caring for and finding homes for our animals. And so I thought, given this, this, this dramatic change, this budding partnership and invaluable partnership, which helps both their shelter and our shelter advance the goal of caring for the animals and finding new homes, that it might be appropriate for Mr. Harris, if he is still here.
Oh, yeah.
Well, come on down. Oh, there we go. Okay, so Glenn, is there anything that you would like to share about this, this, uh, event?
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you esteemed council and staff and everyone who's here. You know, I just have to preface everything with a simple statement. Does anyone here realize how many animals are just tossed out into our desert to die? A lot. And being so involved in the shelter as I've been, the numbers are staggering. Currently at the No Kill Shelter, we have a mama dog named Ducky, who is the sweetest dog ever. She had a litter of eleven puppies. And this mother and her eleven puppies were found tossed out into our desert here in Twenty-Nine Palms. Fortunately, there was a beautiful resident who retrieved those animals, took them home with him, and held on to these brand-new puppies, and ween, had them weaned and separated them for the males and the females, and took care of them all for several months until they were able to be, uh, taken away from their mother, at which point we at the No Kill Shelter brought in the mother and all the girls. And the guy is still holding on to the boys. And we are currently adopting out these puppies, the females. And the reason why we only have the females now is because to spay, uh, to neuter and spay the females is a lot more arduous and a lot more costly than the males. I mean, you could figure that out, but, yeah. Anyway, um, and, uh, we at the No Kill Shelter in Joshua Tree, we've been around since the seventies, and we're still here. In nineteen eighty-five, we officially opened the building in which we still sit. And in two thousand and five, we became the first and only No Kill Shelter in the entire region. And we are till, still to this day. Yeah, it's, um, and in the past, uh, few years, like Mr. James, Dr. James said, we have been, we have been exploding, because we've been raising money, because we have a community of people that do truly care. And I'm happy to announce right here and now that this summer, we are expecting our first two brand-new, state-of-the-art kennel buildings. Because the building we're in now has been there since the seventies. And these two new kennel buildings will be one, uh, full kennel building, and the second one will be a quarantine kennel building. Now I bring that up because, for example, at the Twenty-Nine Shelter recently, all the animals that come in get put together in the same area. And what happens, oftentimes they're diseased, or they have parvo, or whatever, and then it goes rampant through the shelter. And a lot of animals die, a lot of animals become unadoptable, whatever. But now with our new, brand-new quarantine building, every animal that comes in, we will be able to quarantine first for a couple of weeks to make sure they are healthy, sound, and capable of moving forward. We have been working with the Palms and Paws, uh, Shelter, and, you know, it's just extraordinary how far you guys have come, and how much work you are doing, uh, with your shelter. And I applaud you all. And it, it is my personal and professional commitment, personally and also for the No Kill Shelter, that we are here, and our one, our immediate short-term goal is to form a basin-wide alliance for the animals. And we are starting to work with every animal group in the Morongo Basin, including yours, and even the Yucca, uh, Shelter, and Animal Alliance League, and potentially the College, and, and all of the other rescue groups, and the Meow Meows in Yucca Valley, because we're all know that we're all here for the same reason. We wanna save these poor innocent animals, and we wanna find them beautiful forever homes. So, that all being said, we are having our eleventh annual Wolf Walk event, which is, um, coming up on May third. In, um, this time, it's gonna be in Essex Park in Yucca Valley. The town of Yucca Valley has been incredible sponsors for us. They have given us the park, they have given us everything that we need. Uh, because every year until now, it's been in Pioneer Town, and we do well there, but it's very challenging in Pioneer Town because of internet and all that. So anyway, I'm reaching out to all of you to thank you in advance for your support. It is my honor that we get to work with you guys towards becoming a No Kill Shelter. We're all working with Best Friends Society, which is the national organization, to eventually turn every shelter No Kill, 'cause wouldn't that be amazing? So, um, thank you for your support. Uh, we have, at, we have over thirty sponsors right now, including numerous local businesses, organizations, and civic groups from Morongo to Twenty-Nine, to Pioneer to Landers. And, you know, we would appreciate your support, because your sponsorship gets your logo on our banner, which will be exhibited proudly on our new buildings for the next year. So I appreciate, I would love to see you guys, um, be one of the Best in Show supporters for this worthwhile event. And, um, and, you know, the sky's the limit. And let's just save the animals, and let's help, and let's all work together to make this really happen. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes.
Council questions? Call them, it's him, so. All right, back up here. What you wanna do? What you wanna donate?
We can, we can, we can match what Yucca Valley gave them, right?
No, Yucca Valley did in kind. I'm not, they did in kind, in the words, they just added up what it cost them to use the park and stuff. Obviously, if this is gonna help our shelter also, I'm willing to do, what, what are the sponsor levels?
So there's.
What's the Best in Show?
There's, yeah, there's, there's a number of sponsorship levels. There is... There is red ribbon at three hundred dollars. This sponsorship includes your company logo and logo on your banner, which will prominently displayed at the Wolf Walk, and for also one year on the Joshua Tree No Kill Shelter. This is what my wife and I personally donated to. There's blue ribbon, which is six hundred. Sponsorship includes all of the above, except you will appear as a blue ribbon sponsor. In addition, you will be featured on the social media website. Gold sponsor is a thousand. Sponsorship includes all of the above, except you will appear as a gold sponsor. In addition, you will complement a booth, which will be reserved for your company...
Mr. City Manager.
We can just do Best in Show.
I, I can, thank you. All I needed to see was the stuff.
Sorry, sir.
Thank you.
I think we can do Best in Show.
Well, we got money in twenty-one. One twenty-one. Well, we got, yeah, we still have, yeah, we still have some of our shower money left, so we could just take it out of there, so. I'd be willing to do it, the fifteen hundred for homeless animals. Yeah, there you go.
Take it.
Sold. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's easier.
Well, thank you so much. And if I may, Dr. James, I need your logo ASAP.
Very good.
Because we're gonna, we're actually laying out the banner as we speak, and I encourage and welcome everyone to join us at the Wolf Walk. It's going to be an amazing day of just festivities and celebrations of dogs and dog parades, and vendors, and auctions, and raffles, and all kinds of products and services for your animals. So, thank you all so much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number twenty-three?
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. So, this is a, really an opportunity through the council to discuss taking a position on a bill that has come up here recently. And this is AB six-four-seven. And essentially, what this bill proposes to do is it would force cities to allow up to eight housing units, only one of which would be required to be affordable, on lots within an existing, single-family detached home, or in an area zoned for eight or less dwelling units, without any environmental review, or without any public input. So, what does that mean? That means that you could take a single-family detached lot anywhere in the city, and if someone wanted to do it, they could go in, and they could remove the house and build eight dwelling units. Obviously, it'd be attached in place of that one single-family detached house. And so, the California League of Cities is concerned, right? They are a statewide organization that represents cities. And so, what they had done was, they had reached out to the city, and they are requesting that cities provide letters of opposition to their local legislatures in an effort to shield cities statewide from this legislation, which would essentially gut the R-one zoning, or really actually would be, actually, really, anything less than that. And so, this is an opportunity for the council to discuss this.
Counsel questions, comments?
Well, the only comment I'm going to make, when this came up at CalCity's conference last year, some of the council people were already going, well, I'll just tear my nice house down in the middle of Malibu Beach, build an eight-unit, and make ten million dollars. So, I definitely think we should sign this and say, don't do it, because this would be disastrous, especially in our area, as far as it would, our neighborhoods would be totally changed, so. I'm definitely want, would like to pass this to oppose it.
You know, an additional concept to consider here, and Mr. Gardner will, you know, add any details if I've missed it, but, you know, when you design a community, and you design, let's say, an R-one, so residential community, that is going to have however many units an acre, four units, five units, three units an acre, that community, that neighborhood, is designed with certain street widths to contemplate the traffic that would be generated from those dwelling units. And so, one of the challenges is taking a community that would design for R-one, which contemplates a certain number of vehicle trips a day, and then essentially timesing that by eight, and so you can appreciate the traffic impacts on the roads, and then also you can appreciate the parking impacts, because the R-one is designed for a single-family detached house on a property, and it's going to have a certain number of bedrooms, which is going to generate a certain number of people, which is going to generate a certain number of cars. So, that is just something that the community would want to be aware of if all of a sudden you started removing R-one houses, which maybe has three bedrooms, and replacing it with a product that has eight units. Also, one of the things to mention, and I believe Mr. Gardner will also comment, is, right now, Mr. Gardner, if someone wanted to build a house, do they have the ability to go by right three stories tall, or is it just two stories?
It's thirty-five feet tall.
Okay, so three stories.
That could be two and a half to three.
Okay, so then that means with this, given the changes that the state has made, that somebody could come in, they could tear down a house, they could go thirty-five feet tall. Generally speaking, a story is ten feet. And so, that could be, you could have a single-family detached house, and then next to you, you could have a three-story building that has eight dwelling units, eight different families living within it. And Mr. Munoz, if you had anything else to add, I don't mean to exclude you from this conversation. So, just, you know, this is a very impactful, and really, one of the challenges too, is it's stripping away the rights of cities to say, hey, this doesn't fit our community. If we were downtown Los Angeles, maybe they'd be okay with it, but we're not downtown Los Angeles.
Yeah, I got nothing from the public, nope. Alright, back up here.
I make a motion, we oppose it. We write the letter.
I'll second. Roll call.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Mints?
Aye.
Mayor Buildering?
Aye.
Approve five oh.
Future council initiated items? Any add-ons? Any updates?
Yes, sir. So, a couple of updates. So, Mr. Gardner and I have been working on, and really Keith has done a great job working with also the Public Works Department to go through and to map all of the roads within our city. And so, you can go on, one of our viewers now, when we've got the roads that are maintained, and also, there are probably maybe four miles of roads that are dirt roads that are maintained, even though they're dirt, and the rest of them are paved. And so, ultimately, Keith and I will probably be partnering this to come back before council to just give an overview of what roads are maintained, what roads are dirt and maintained, and which roads are not maintained, and also provide a little color to the community about what it costs in order to take a road that is a dirt road and turn it into a paved road. And so, our goal is to have that come before council in May. Also, Keith and his team have been making progress on the review and discussion of fees as it relates to site plan reviews for ancillary uses. Right now, Mr. Gardner is anticipating having something on the May twenty-seventh agenda. Assuming there's no delays, I believe that he should be able to hit that date. We are waiting for information from the Boys and Girls Club, so we'll be following up with them here shortly to find out what progress has been made. And then also, in terms of discussion on reviewing policies for nonprofits who receive funding from the city. Right now, the city attorney, Mr. Munoz here, has done a great job of coming up with a grant document. We are circulating that internally to see if there's different stakeholders, different users of that document. And that document would really just be, depending on which department, some departments already have documentation in place that stipulates if a grant, like a community event grant, or donation is made, that it is used for the intended purposes. There are other departments that could probably use this document, so that's something that we're working on.
Excuse me, Mr. City Manager, that's, you know, that's one of my items, and so I just want to clarify. It's not just about the requirement, the requirements for meeting grants for the city. It's also about, you know, how many, like, creating a process of, you know, is there going to be a committee that they're going to go through before it even comes to council? I think that that process also needs to be clarified as well. We have a lot of inconsistencies when giving out monies.
Very good, thank you. And that is, that's all that I have in terms of future initiated items.
Alright, thank you. Is that public comment? Wow. It's thicker paper, just looks like a lot. Alright, public comments. This is a time for the public to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city council that are not on this agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council, and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during their comments. There's a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you have already done so, please fill out the name and address slips and give it to the city clerk. The city council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. Public comments on specific agenda items will be deferred until consideration on the item of the agenda. Leading off is... Uh-oh. Someone's there, I can't see. Another one can't see. Is this a joke right now? Ben Guzman? There you go, alright. Brian Mivia? Mahia?
Good evening. I'm here today to speak on behalf of many concerned parents and community members about an incident that recently took place at our local park, an incident that should have never happened the way it did. A call was made to the sheriff reporting someone wearing a mask and holding a knife. That person turned out to be a thirteen-year-old boy named Ryder, who is autistic, and who happened to enjoy wearing a mask. He did have a small knife on him, about two to three inches in length, but he was not threatening anyone. In fact, the environment before law enforcement arrived was calm and relaxed. Kids were playing, adults were nearby watching, and everything was normal. Then, everything changed. A group of sheriffs, one in particular, charged into the park with weapons drawn. One sheriff pointed a gun at the children and ordered them to lie flat on their stomachs. This happened without any real assessment of the situation, without asking questions, without taking a moment to observe what was actually happening. And that's where the real problem lies. I'm not here to tiptoe around in truth about the truth or downplay what happened. This was a failure in the judgment. This was a failure in proper procedure. And this was a failure to treat a group of innocent children with the care and respect they deserve. Ryder, a child with special needs, was treated like a threat, and every child there was treated like a suspect. This is not how our community should be policed. We understand law enforcement officers have a difficult and dangerous job, but with that responsibility comes the need for discernment, especially when responding to calls in spaces where children are present. That's not negotiable. What happened at the park that day didn't just scare our children, it changed how they see the people who are supposed to protect them. It shook the trust that many families had in law enforcements. And for Ryder and his family, it sent a message that being different can make you a target. Our homeschool group is part of this community. We gather in these public spaces to build friendships and learn in safe, supportive environments. And we need to know that when law enforcement arrives, they will not bring profession, they will bring professionalism and thoughtful judgment, not fear and chaos. This community deserves better. Our children deserve better. Ryder deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan DeFalcio?
Promised my last time up here. I want to bring to your guys' attention that the summer's coming, it's going to be hot. From where I'm standing at right now, three miles in various different directions from this spot, we still have over a hundred homeless individuals on our streets. I had brought before you guys ideas of water fountains, water bottles, maybe getting some of the local stores to be able to give out the water bottles, and those ideas have not come through. So, I decided a new suggestion. Perhaps, we could put one of those water machines at four corners, and instead of them having to pay for the water, because most unhoused don't have money, I will provide drinking cups, and they would be able to go up there and get water. Living in a rural city here in California, there's a law that they have to have access to drinking water. It's very hard when you go to, like, the gas stations or Circle K, and they're told you still have to pay that dollar, dollar, whatever, even if it's just water, because you're paying more for the cup. You can't get a soda for the same price. So, my suggestion is maybe one of those drinking machines of water, and I'll provide the cups. Because like I said, we still have over a hundred unhoused, a minimum hundred unhoused, from where I'm standing. Actikina still provides meals each week and water all over the city. And so, having one at four corners would be beneficial. I think it would get the most people. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Bernard?
Two quick things. One thing, just very quickly, on the nonprofits, I thought what we were talking about with the nonprofits was not something where we're talking about the grants, but we're talking about a vetting system for any nonprofit that comes up to this dais and speaks about trying to get funding, that there's a consistent vetting process, where you go through the DOJ, you look at their status with the DOJ, you look at the Secretary of State, you look at the status of Secretary of State, you make sure they have their IRS 501(c)(3), and that all of those ducks are in order because they have a tendency here to not be looking at everything, and that's when you get into trouble. So, I think what we're talking about is just a consistent vetting process. But anyway, aside from that, what I did want to talk about, that's not why I actually came up here, is that I am participating in the Morongo Basin Conservation Association Waterwise Garden Tour. And I am the only house in Twenty-Nine Palms that's a part of the tour. So, I wanted to let you know about it. It's this Sunday, April twenty-seventh, from nine to four. The ticket supports the Morongo Basin Conservation Association. The ticket without membership, I think, is twenty dollars for the tour. And if you buy a membership, it's thirty-five dollars, and a couple is sixty bucks. And you get to go to, I don't know, five to seven houses, and see how people have prepared their gardens in order to save water. There's several special events throughout the day, and you can come hang out with me if you choose. And see my house from nineteen sixty-four, and the garden with the mature palm trees, the saguero, the Joshua trees, all in one place, that my grandparents started and put together when they bought the property in nineteen sixty-one. So, I hope you can come. The information is on the Morongo Basin Conservation Association's website. If you Google Waterwise Tour, Morongo Basin Conservation Association, you will find it. Thanks.
Thank you. Kay Hartley?
Commander. I'd like to speak to LaShara, please, because I would like to hear you about how much she has said.
She's next.
Oh, can I have her go first, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying her names, I didn't have to. I couldn't, I was like, how do I say it? I was like, how do I say this? Yeah.
No worries. So, I want to provide a later clarification regarding the incident at the park that you are now aware of. On April third, parents and children ages two through thirteen were playing at the park beautifully, at Lucky Park, enjoying each other's laughter and fellowship in the safety of the community. At approximately twelve-thirty, this all changed, when children the ages of five, there are five children ages two, six, eleven, twelve, and thirteen were ordered to get down on the ground, and they became surrounded by five police, including one officer from Smash who specializes in gangs, drugs, and firearms. Pistols and assault rifles were drawn. The children, not the adults, were surrounded, and it resulted in one thirteen-year-old autistic child being placed handcuffed and searched for the pocket knife that was not openly brandished. After the incident, the children needed several hours to calm down, tears to stop, and receive comfort from their parents, but the fears and the anger of the parents could not be quieted. The park today was ruined, and the trust of our local officers was broken. The children were left saying comments that, "The news is right, the police are evil, I never want to see the police again, and what did I do wrong?" The battalion chief was contacted regarding the incident, and his response was, "They received a call that there was a knife at the park around the children." at the park around the children." He stated that the firearms at the ready were necessary, and they will always respond in this way when they hear a knife. He also shared that one week prior to the incident, they lost an officer to a stabbing, and immediately prior to the park, the park call, they were, they did a planned raid in which the firearms were fired from those specific police, indicating that adrenaline was still coursing, and there was no break between the planned raid and the park call. And the same officers who responded to the raid responded to the park, per battalion chief. The concern is that the officers met a peaceful park day with the same forces of raid. They brought the same weapons that were discharged at the raid, per the battalion officer, to the park where the children, at least fourteen children and ten adults were playing. No questions were asked of the parents, and the children ages two, six, eleven, twelve, and thirteen were treated with the same intensity as the adults at the raid. I'm bringing this to your attention because something is broken. I'm unsure if it's policy that's broken, if it's culture that's broken, or if it's people that's broken, but I'm a hundred percent sure that the trust is broken. I'm bringing this to your attention so that you are not ignorant of the current police's inability to assess at that time, the inability to respond appropriately, and the potential for PTSD that exists in the police force. And I'm also bringing this to your attention so that if there is another incident and a child does end up shot, our elected officials cannot claim ignorance to the issue that this may have existed. The police were once looked to for protection, have now come to stuff as mother's nightmares. I don't want to say their specific names for their protection for our safety, but I do want to bring it to your information and let you know you have been informed. If you have, if you have a desire for specific information regarding the police, the time, the date, and the incident number, I have it for you. If not, you've been a made aware.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kimber. So I'm the mother of that autistic son, and I just want to bring to your attention that this is Autism Awareness Month. Your community is packed with families with autistic children. This is an ongoing dilemma in California alone. I just read, and I read every day on my websites, about children between the ages of ten and eighteen years old being shot. These are autistic children. This is a problem, because you have not looked at your community and you've not made yourself aware at the growing number. We are now down to one in thirty-one. If you calculate how many kids you have here in this community, your schools are becoming overrun. We are having problems just giving them the services that they need. I homeschool my child, I've been given that opportunity, but I just need you to be aware that what happened on the playground with my son is nothing new to us parents who have children who are autistic. We deal with this frightening thing every day. I wonder what's going to happen next. When is my kid going to be the one? That day on the playground showed me. I need to be more aware, and I need to be far scared of everything that's going around in this community, and our police need to be held accountable for this situation and others. I have had many run-ons. I have a mentally disabled neighbor who the cops are called on all the time. I have had a run-in with these particular police on a regular basis, and I have asked them specifically, with California passing a law stating they need to have training with mentally handicapped and individually autistic, not just adults, children. They need to have this. They said they did. He simply blew it off like it was just one more thing. He told me, if we needed to have that training, we probably did it. Well, that's great, Officer whoever, I'm not going to say names. He simply dismissed it, which tells me he has not taken into consideration the seriousness of this. And they are simply just doing due diligence, which is very sad for our community, you guys. You don't see many families out with their autistic kids because they are scared. They are not coming out. They're not going to join in your community fun, because they are frightened of everybody pointing and making scenes about them. We need to be inclusive. I thought that's what we were doing. So I hope you, as the members of this community, the governing body, I hope you take into consideration, look up the statistics of how many children have been killed, just in California alone, under the age of eighteen. I would really, really just ask you to do that, considering it is Autism Awareness Month, and I just want you guys to just go home, look up the statistics, please, and just start paying attention to that community, because we are here. We are part of your community. I bring my son today here so he can see you. He knows who you are now, and I want him to believe in you, okay? And I want to believe in you too. So please, take this into consideration, all of us. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. French?
My name is Gail French. My husband is Bob French over here, and we live on Two Mile Road. And that's the reason I'm here tonight, is to talk about a residence on Two Mile Road, not mine, but seven-three-four-three-two. And what is happening there is that that house has at least ten vehicles, four trailers, one of them lived in. One is a hauling trailer, and the other has a boat on it. Okay? We've been told by the state DMV and the city of Twenty-Nine Palms, if these vehicles have a tag on it, a non-use tag, they are in compliance. He can have as many as he wants. Now, we're here tonight to ask you, to maybe you can make a new ordinance, so that every residence are, there are many residents that have a lot of vehicles on them, and they can't run. They don't run. We're asking you to make an ordinance saying how many can be on one lot. Now, we called and talked to the DMV, and they said that many towns make laws or ordinances saying how many can be on a house. It doesn't have to comply with a state DMV ordinance. You can make the ordinance yourself. Also, on this particular lot, seven-three-four-three-zero, Two Mile Road, the resident has a twenty-five-foot trailer that someone is living in. Whether they're paying or not paying, they're in it. And that trailer also brought more cars, more motorcycles, more and more and more. And it's on a single lot. So what we're asking you tonight is to consider just two things we're bringing to you. One, the number of non-use vehicles that, that one lot can have. Be careful, because the non-use can go forever and ever. You can get tags, 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 and you're okay. Secondly, can you rent out a trailer that is on your lot? What happens to the waste? What happens to the trash? Anyhow, two small things we're bringing up, and it's for you to consider. Thanks.
Thank you. Jonathan Santiago?
Good evening, council members and city, people of the Twenty-Nine Palms. My name is Jonathan. I am with ESA Solar. We wanted to come here tonight and introduce ourselves. We are planning on developing a project with Southern California Edison on the substation down the corner of Dorth Place and the Parkway here. So yeah, we just want to let you know, we're going to be working with them to add a battery energy storage system and a small solar field around twenty acres to help support the local infrastructure and the grid with that substation. So just want to come here and introduce ourselves. And yeah, we will be looking at around eighteen months or so, so twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, to break ground hopefully. So yeah, we, we will be back here, so you'll, you'll see my face here again, along with my other team members. So thank you for the time. Around one megawatt, so three megawatt projects. Correct. Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
City Manager's update?
Thank you, Mayor.
Did you mark two? Did you mark two on one? Okay, go ahead. Yeah, no worries.
I got so excited about the solar guy on Dorth. Hi, good evening. A different, little bit different tone for what's been going on tonight. I just wanted to touch base on some really amazing things that I'm seeing happening in Twenty-Nine Palms. They range all sorts of different elements, and we have a great crew of people here in chambers tonight, so I'm happy to share. In no particular order, Planning Department, a few months ago, sent out postcards to the residents, not the property owners, but the residents who live here, which as we know is in the fifty percent of renters, talking about trash and the ordinance of bringing in trash cans and just a little bit of education. I think this is amazing. I think of a lot of what goes on within the community isn't with malice or on purpose to not be doing something correctly. They just don't know. They're like, hey, I should be bringing my trash can in within twenty-four hours, and this is why. I mean, they might realize that the trash can might blow over, and the wheels break, and the lids pop off, but I thought that that method of the postcards was a really proactive, great way to educate the community. And I've already told Keith, I think the lighting ordinance should be next. Next, and I'm sorry to see Anna leave already, the PAC, as well as Public Works with their assistance, did a great job getting our Twenty-Nine refinished and back at the base of Donnell Hill. It looks wonderful. PAC really went to bat on this, as the city council's aware, to get those, those funds to do so and to, that process happening. So it's done, it's shiny, it's new, and thank you PAC and city council for having that happen, as well as the assistance from Public Works. And lastly, a positive note on the T-Bid, for those of you who aren't aware, we have our Tourism Board Improvement District, which is our tourism department, bringing Twenty-Nine Palms as a destination. We have a meeting on Thursday. It is open to the public. I encourage you and everybody here to attend this session. It's City Hall here in these chambers at three-thirty. And the main topic of agenda is the second half of twenty-twenty-five events, grants and scholarships, or sponsorships, excuse me. So if you are interested in the events that are going to be happening, or producer want to be part of the discussion for what types of things are coming to our community that not only, you know, support everything that we want to do and we can enjoy, but also support the mission to have Twenty-Nine Palms be a destination for others. So I encourage people to attend on Thursday at three-thirty to be a part of that process. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So I've just got a couple of brief comments tonight. So one, wanted to just kind of update the community. The strategic planning session is, the strategic planning effort is still underway, as the community is aware. The council decided to take a little bit of a different approach this year, and that was really take a look at what do we, who do we want to become in twenty years? And then with that twenty-year vision, work backwards and identify what is going to be our zero-to-five-year strategic plan that we can begin to work on and accomplish over the next five years, so that will get us closer to that twenty-year goal. And so as a part of that process, we had an evening here. It was, I thought, an exciting evening Friday night, and it was a little over four hours where we went department by department, and we shared with the community what each department does. And so what are the staffing levels, which I think are quite remarkable, given the limited staff that we as a city operate under. We were also able to share some of the big things we accomplished, just in general, and also I think it's further magnified, given the staff that we had. And then also some of the things we're currently working on, future expenses, future opportunities. And so that, again, was really designed to help educate the community on what local government does, provide a little bit more transparency, a little bit more visibility into the daily jobs of a city clerk, of a public works department, of a community development department, of the parks and recreation. And in fact, what we did was, we went ahead and videotaped that, and I believe that should be available online. We also have a copy of the PowerPoint presentation. And then that sort of really served as the foundation to move into the Saturday workshop. And I, I was grateful, I was impressed by, I think, the quality and the efficacy of the Saturday workshop. And so that really was a community event, and so it was a combination of both the city council, city staff, and the community, talking about, who are we? What's important to us as a community? Who do we want to be in twenty years? And how do we become the best version of ourselves? And so I think that there's a council member who had it right, the In-N-Out, In-N-Out was able to grow as a company, but it's still the great, same great product that started back in, what, seventy years ago now. And so we are continuing to work on that strategic planning process, to take those comments, all of the comments, all of the things on the walls and from the breakout groups, and put that down on paper. We are working with staff, we'll be working with staff next week, to really start trying to identify, okay, this is the North Star that the community and the council have identified, so what are the steps staff can take in order to realize those goals? We do still anticipate having a community survey going out. Our hope is that it's going to be launched in the next week. That is going to be yet another opportunity for the city, city community, to opine and provide some thoughts on what the city is doing well, what are some opportunities for improvement or change. And so that's that, just a quick update on that. And then also, excited to report that there is going to be a great little restaurant coming into our downtown Twenty-Nine Palms, and that's going to be Snake Bite Twenty-Nine. And so if anyone has done any traveling along sixty-two, they will see the original Snake Bite that is over in Yucca. And so they have decided to, to spread out, and they realize the energy and the fun and the excitement, all of good things that are going on within our downtown. And so they took over the former Happy Cooker site. They are in the process of tenant improvements, and I think there's a lot of promise for another fun venue for entertainment, relaxation, some food, and great drink. And that is all. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Have a great weekend. I'm going to adjourn.